Okay, we are here together in a special work session. This is a work session here on November 2nd at 2:00. This is an open session, of course, and we are going to talk about two items. One is the property and casualty insurance. And the reason we're meeting on this and voting on this today, Mr. Huth, is because...
It is, the current policy is expiring this week.
Okay, and we wanted to give people as much time as we could to get their bids in, so therefore, we extended it until, I think, last Friday. So today, then, we are going to go ahead and vote on something. And the second item is a resolution to waive property tax administration fees and late penalty charge. Mr. Flint?
Yeah, basically, this is a, this is a housekeeping item. Normally, for the first meeting in November, we're required on an annual basis to vote to waive. It's, we have to take a proactive stance on it, otherwise, the 1% administrative fee, which is essentially amount to a 1% tax increase, kicks in automatically if we don't take action. So we've done it every year. It's normally a consent agenda item, but since we're not having a meeting this Tuesday, it's on for today.
Okay, so those are the two items, and Mr. Groth, if you could please take roll call.
Paula Feiler.
She's excused.
Excuse Michael Flynn.
Here.
Stanley Groth's here. Nick Nytenge.
Here.
Rick Statikas.
Here.
Paul Feier.
Here.
Dagwazia.
Here.
We have a call.
Okay, good. We'll first start with the insurance, and that is the first topic, property and casualty insurance. Is there anybody here from the agencies? We've got Nicole Saft?
Steven Saft, Junior and Senior from Nicole and Saft.
Okay, great. So we have some questions we'll ask you, and I don't see anybody here from the other two agencies, but anyway, if we have questions, at least we do have Nicole and Saft here. That's good. I'll tell you what I did in my analysis. First of all, I'm going to pass this out. This is nothing more than what you already have. This just kind of rehashes what we have in front of us. And what we have in front of us really are four submissions. The first submission is from IBEX. There is no bid, so that doesn't count as a proposal. So obviously, that is actually from Michigan. That would be from IBEX Insurance Agency. So that was, because there's nothing there to look at. The next three, the first one would be, what I have is the municipal, Michigan Municipal League. That is actually the highest bid at $542,000, okay? The next highest would be Nicole and Saft at $524,000 and some change. And the lowest bid we have is from the John Gaddafi Agency Incorporated, which I will say is HCC. I'll refer to that one as HCC. And Nicole and Saft, from here on in, I will refer to as Beacon One, because those are the insurance companies actually doing the underwriting. So what I did in my analysis is I looked at all three of these, and I didn't see anything in the Michigan Municipal League proposal that was not in one of these. So because it was the highest at $542,000, almost $20,000 higher than Beacon One, and almost $25,000 higher than HCC, I just put this aside, because there's nothing in here that we need that would not be in these two. So I threw away this, this is what I did. I threw away the highest bid.
What was HCC's bid?
What does it stand for?
There was three bids, wasn't there?
Yeah, HCC is one.
I didn't see the third bid.
Beacon One is the second one.
We'll get you, Mr. Cook.
Yeah, we'll get you later. So those are the three. So those are the three. And so now, it comes between Beacon One, Nicole and Saft, or HCC, Mr. Gaddafi. So what I did is I looked at both policies, and I saw that in HCC's sexual abuse endorsement, with HCC, there's no coverage. With Beacon One, there's a million dollars' worth of coverage. And this is very important, because we have a lot of minors in parks and rec, and we also have our police officers in contact with many minors as well. So I think we do need the sexual abuse endorsement, very important.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Well, let me go through these, and then you can ask them.
No, 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 wait. I've got a question about what you just said.
Yeah.
So, and you give me time to forget it, then that's what will happen.
Why don't you write it down, and then you can have your...
No, I don't need to write it down.
Okay.
I want to ask a question now.
Okay.
What does excluding workman's comp mean?
Okay, I'll get to that. I'm not going to answer that yet. I'll get to that at the end. It means that there's no workers' comp policy on either one of these.
Is there any reason that you know of, with your vast experience in insurance, that why this was not included in the Gandolphi quote?
Well, because nobody included that in their quotes. Nobody was asked to. This was on property...
You just said that Nicole and Saft included it. I'm talking about the, whatever you were talking, whatever you were blustering about.
Okay, wait, wait, hold on. Let me just say this, because I don't want to mix everybody up here. There is no workers' comp in any of these policies, and let me be very, very clear in saying that nor were these people asked to submit any workers' comp policies. So let me make that very clear. No workers' comp.
Okay, that's clear. Okay, thank you.
Now, the next one, then, would be the emergent, okay, so is everybody on board with that? Sexual abuse endorsement, zero for HCC, and a million dollars for Beacon One. Beacon One is the existing policy that we now have. Pesticides or herbicides, I don't know how important that is for anybody, but what that means is if somebody sprays our lawn, we do spray from time to time, and someone gets sick, we're covered for that. We have a million dollars with Beacon One, zero for HCC. A very important one, in my opinion, as is the sexual abuse endorsement, is the emergency response operations totally excluded. It's zero coverage for HCC, and $10 million for Beacon One. Now, why is that important? Because for our first responders, EMS, they are carting people, they're lifting people, they're putting needles in arms and what have you. There's a lot that can go wrong in a day, and every single day, there's potential for some damage. So under the Beacon One proposal, again, about $10 million, do we need that much? Probably not, but I would say that zero coverage is not acceptable for this category. And as I continue going down, special events. Under Beacon, or under HCC, there is no coverage. However, if we want coverage, we can fill out a special events application for every special event that we have. We have about 50 special events. So under HCC, the way it's written now, we would have to put in an application every time we have a special event. However, for Beacon One, we're automatically covered. Automatically covered for all events that we have here in Shelby Township. And another difference I saw here, when you look at the total liability, it's capped off at $5 million for HCC. It's $10 million for Beacon One. So we have double the coverage for Beacon One that we do with HCC. And something else I wanted to talk about, too, was when I was looking over these schedules, I saw that it said here that the total building and contents limit was $45 million, but the material we handed out was for $72 million. So I made a call to the owner of that agency that's handling HCC, and he said not to worry that, even though didn't hand in a policy that said we were covered for $72 million, he said that we were. So based on his verbal commitment, and also, he sent me a, he sent me a fax, and I'm going to read it to you. "Mr. Statikas encloses a revised property schedule," and as you can see, page two is a rest of the schedule. So he did send me the schedule after the deadline, and he said that I never requested a sample policy, and he's right. We didn't, we did not do that, because sample policies really don't do us any good. We want to see the real policy, which usually does not get published until many weeks later. And he said that if you would have, you would have seen a $5 million of environmental coverage. The above environmental coverage is not found in other policies. Well, I had a question for, since you're here, Mr. Saft, representing Beacon One, do you, does your policy cover environmental? Yes or no?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Environmental is a difficult insurable exposure. We're covering environmental for failure to supply. We're covering environmental for the application of pesticides, herbicides. We're covering, if someone makes an allegation about pollutant in regards to sewer backup, we're covering the township for the full property limits. If a building, fire or building claim results in pollution damage to your structure, we provide that full coverage. Your biggest exposure for pollution as a municipality truly is an entirely separate policy, which comes at a different time for the township, and that's your underground fuel and above-ground fuel storage tanks.
Are we covered for that?
Yes, you have a separate policy for that, that you're required to carry by state statute. You're obligated to provide evidence of financial responsibility. So we provide a separate policy, and the concept is there is, where you come into pollution exclusions is the exposure over time. The tank leaked and leaked and leaked, and finally, we found out about this because a pollutant is now in the, it found its way into the groundwater, or the pollutant has found its way into somebody's well. The coverage that's afforded with the policy normally looks at sudden and accidental, but when you look at those extended exposure events, any policy is going to exclude those. And that's why, for the particular exposure for tanks, you do buy and have bought that separate third-party pollution and site cleanup policy.
That's the one I wanted to hear about.
Excuse me, may I ask, the separate policy you're speaking about cares an extra premium. Is that small?
Correct. It comes up at a different time of the year. It doesn't come up with this November 5th renewal, and I didn't bring that with me, but I can, if anybody's interested, I can send a copy of that. And I think the premium's a couple of grand.
Yeah, very minor. I looked at it.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So bottom line, for an extra $6,700 bucks and change, we're giving $10, $20 million in additional coverage?
Well, I don't want to say $10 or $20 million, but I'm saying for the extra $6 million, we're getting sexual abuse endorsement for a million.
That's a million bucks.
Yeah, you're right. Pesticide, yeah, you're right. Pesticides, a million.
Another million.
Emergency response, $10 million.
$10 million, so you're $12.
And also, the max, the max they have, the max they have is $5 million, and we've got a $10 million with, for the extra $6 grand.
Yeah, so $10, $12 million for an extra $6,700 bucks.
Okay, yep, yep. And I have a question for Mr. Huth. Mr. Huth, can you, I got to ask you a question. They put on their note, Beacon One, that they had something else they were looking at, but they couldn't get it in before 2:00. Can you explain that?
And I just double-checked with Mr. Saft.
Okay.
But what they ran into was, they gave you a quote, and it sounds like you're doing the right thing. You're evaluating it as if it is for $524,000. Since he's put this quote in, he has said, he's bootstrapped. He said, "I told you I might be able to go lower." He's just confirmed he can go lower. I'll let him address that with the board. So the board is able to negotiate and go lower. That would be great. It would be, the ideal situation would be saying that even comparing $524 to $517, we like $524, but we want $524 to be lower if possible, then ask them if they can come lower.
Okay, before we go there, though, does the board have any questions on, say, we didn't go any lower, but because of what Mr. Flynn just said about all these extra coverages that we need, that we don't have with a lower quote, is everybody okay with sticking to the, yeah, go ahead.
I just have two things I want to clarify, or if I may. What do I do, hit the mute button or the select button?
Yeah, mute button.
Hit the mute button to be heard.
Yes, I know it doesn't make sense.
All right. The sexual abuse and molestation coverage is not limited to minors. So if you had an adult who was in the incarcerated or in the care of the police department, or someone being carried even by someone in your emergency first responders, and an allegation came back of an abuse or molestation coverage, minor or adult, the coverage for that million dollars is afforded for that exposure. We don't identify or limit that to strictly a minor. Number two, this policy from, from one beacon includes full policy limits for sewer backup, for sewer liability coverage. As elected officials, you may be aware that you obtain a certain degree of immunity by virtue of State Act 222. And we come up against this all the time when people, residents and property owners come back and say, you know, sewage backed into my home, whether sanitary or storm. And should that immunity be pierced, and the State Statute Act 222 again does lay out what has to happen for that liability to come back to the community, we've got the full $10 million limits for that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
About the sewer backups, have you ever paid a claim on a sewer backup?
Oh, absolutely.
You have? Because what I see is the DPW is paying these claims. Are you reimbursing DPW for these claims?
What happened, when we first came on board here...
No, no, just answer the, have you paid these claims?
I'm confident that we have.
Well, you're confident, have you or haven't?
Well, you're asking me right now, and I'm saying, I know that we've seen the claims, so we've either defended them or we paid them.
I see in the bill run where the DPW is paying them. Maybe you've reimbursed them. I don't know, but that question I would like to have answered.
Okay, we'll look into it, and I'm very confident that, yeah, we'll look into it.
In Shelby Township, not only they had sewer backup, but the people sued because they claimed that it was the township's fault.
Right.
We defended that and won, but...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
He's making the point that beyond Shelby Township, we have experienced with this with other municipalities, and we are either paying claims if liability exists, or defending them if we feel that the immunity from Act 222 is strong. But I will get back to you regarding specific claims from the township.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions by the board?
I have a question.
Yeah.
What's the value of the extra amount of money that you guys are claiming were covered for? What would that cost us in a policy? Can somebody put a monetary amount on it?
I can't tell you, because a policy for sexual abuse could cost anything from, I don't even want to put a value on it.
For a policy, an insurance policy.
Yeah, because see, you know, it depends on the, how many employees you have. I mean, unless you want to take a stab at it, go ahead.
You're saying if you bought those covers, all the car...
You guys are calculating the numbers. You said we're getting $20 million more worth of coverage.
If, for example, the sexual harassment for a million dollars, I'm going to believe that that's at least between $2,500 and $7,500 a year, but I can get exact costs. I don't have that. When you talk about the difference of liability, Mr. Statikas referred to the fact that we're at $10 million, and they're, what did you say, Mr. Statikas? They're at $5 million? I know the umbrella that we're charging, attempting to charge the township for that full limit is $47,000, so you could probably cut that in half, at least, to get down to equal $5, $5 million.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So for the $6,700 buck difference here, well...
Well, yeah.
I have a question. Who asked you to be here today?
Yeah.
I did, I called and asked.
Okay, was any of the other people notified of the meeting, do we know?
I didn't notify them or anybody, and I never, and I never do.
So nobody's here except them to answer questions?
Everybody had the right to show up. They were the only ones who called and said...
I called three times to figure out the date of the time.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Huth.
I understand my role, lawyer, not policymaker, but I want to take the opportunity just to speak up. I just met this man when I started doing the work, or they became an agent in Shelby Township. We have some role representing 35 communities. This is the only place I've worked with him, and he is absolutely by far the most responsive of anybody I've dealt with. Anytime I need something, I call him, I get it promptly, and when we go to a closed session, it'll be another example of what he's done and other people in his role have not done. So I just, I need to put it on the record, he's been absolutely responsive to us, and I appreciate that.
Can you speak on behalf of the company from Sterling Heights?
Let me tell you about the company from Sterling Heights. I did have another community that did choose them.
They do underwrite policies for other communities just like us, right?
Yeah, they do, and you asked, why is he here and they're not? In the other community, same thing happened. Mr. Saft showed up, and they did not, although they knew it was on the agenda, so...
I appreciate your support of Mr. Saft.
I do support him, because he's been...
That's [BLEEP], and you know it.
Hey, come on, that's enough. That's enough, Mr. Feier.
I'm sorry, this is great. Somebody's been responsive.
This is on tape, guys.
Yeah, this, I don't care if it's on tape or not. That's not the way we talk at these meetings. We don't allow people at meetings to talk about that.
You've got your religion on your sleeve again.
No, I just don't allow that, and I'm not going to allow it today.
Okay, carry on.
Go ahead, Mr. Huth, finish. Go ahead.
I've made my case.
Okay, then, anybody else, any questions? Okay, would somebody like to make...
Well, I'd like to hear what the actual price is before we make a motion, because he said we're going to low.
They're willing to match $5,017.
I think that their proposal is lower than that. Can you, Mr. Saft, with your new proposal, what would the number be?
Can we do that with a motion? Okay.
You mean you're lowering the price of the premium here today?
Yeah, why not? If he's willing to do...
Nobody else has the opportunity to lower their premium?
Nobody asked.
Why, look, you...
Can I respond to this?
I want to just say this, and then, you evaluated the policy based on $524, and you've found reasons to support $524. If the man's here willing to go lower, why wouldn't the community accept lower right now?
Well, yeah, nobody else has had the opportunity to be lower.
Okay, well, Mr. Feier, if you want to pay more, just go ahead and vote for the higher option.
Yeah. I'm not voting for this at all today, because we're not supposed to vote in this session anyway.
Okay, okay.
May I, may I comment on the price, please?
Yes.
If you look at my cover letter dated October 29th, on page one, and I'm going to quote my last sentence, my paragraph deals about Shelby Manor. And those of you that are familiar with the township's recent history, Shelby Manor is problematic as far as complaints are suggested. My last sentence reads, "We are waiting on a competing carrier, comma, Siva Insurance Services, comma, for an alternative property quote. If the proposal is presented, if this proposal is presented as accepted, we may be able to improve upon pricing and coverage, assuming Siva releases an indication." So by the time the bid was due, and I certainly understand, I deal in the public sector marketplace, this is our, how we butter our bread. My bid stands as the $500 and $24,000, and I'm proud of that number. But Siva came in after the fact, and I sent an email to Mr. Huth, and I'll read this into the record. Within the proposal, and this was sent on Thursday, the 29th, and its date stamped 2:39, the proposal was due Thursday, the 29th at 2:00. So 39 minutes later, I sent this message. "Within the proposal cover letter that I delivered to the township's clerk's office earlier today, I included the following statement in my narrative on Shelby Manor. We are waiting on a competing carrier, Siva Insurance, for an alternative property quote. If the proposal is presented as acceptable, we may be able to improve upon both pricing and coverage, assuming Siva releases an indication. As luck would have it, the quote hit my desk at 12:13 PM. As I suspected, I can further improve upon the premium offering for the upcoming renewal. If we replace the current carrier landmark that is affording model line property coverage for Shelby Manor with Siva, I can reduce the annual premium by additional $15,047.85."
Can you say that number again?
Say it again, yeah.
A reduction of $15,047.85. "I assume the township preserves the right to accept rejected proposals. I was not present for the bid opening, nor am I aware of the pricing and coverage offered by others. I hope my declaration alerted the township the possibility of improved offering will serve to satisfy all parties. Regardless, sorry to place a matter that is apparently already under scrutiny in a position of greater controversy. If you can't, won't accept the Siva proposal alternative, I completely understand. Thank you."
Can I just make one suggestion? Since he did come in after 2:00, why don't we just vote on the policy the way it is, without the letter that we got from him after the 2:00 deadline? And then, if we pick his proposal, Mr. Huth, you and Mr. Saft can negotiate whatever you want to negotiate, and I don't think you need to come to the board if we get a decrease in the premium. I think everybody would be okay with that. However, if he increases a premium, I think it's got to come back to the board, and that's not going to happen. So because it was after 2:00, let's leave that off.
Yeah, but can I say something?
Go ahead.
Mr. Huth says we have the authority to negotiate these contracts, so we're negotiating it right now. Let's just do it. I've got my calculator right here.
Where's you figure?
I'm subtracting it right now.
He's got it, I think. Mike's got it, I didn't get it yet. I'm working on it.
Okay.
So it's $524,622.90 minus 15, 047.85 equals $509,575.05. So I would move to...
Mr. Chairman, I need to ask a couple of questions before we move on this issue.
Okay.
I've got a...
You can make a motion, and then we'll go.
Yeah, okay.
Say the figure again.
For discussion, it's three years.
Yeah, this is a three-year, Mr. Huth, with the option of buying, just like the last one.
What was it before?
Three years and option.
I would move to award Township Insurance Services to Nicole and Saft at a premium cost of $509,575.05, as proposed here today.
I second that.
For a three-year with a one option, with a one-year option?
Three years, whatever's in the thing.
Okay, yeah. Motion made by Mr. Flynn, seconded by Mr. Groth, and one more thing before we go to, for discussion, for more discussion. Why are we voting today? Why can't we do this in November?
Well, we're doing it right now, because the policy expires later this week, so we have to take action.
And we couldn't have it ready before the last meeting, because people wanted more time?
Right, we extended the deadline, actually, to give them more time.
Okay.
Not Saft, but one of the other bidders.
Okay, and everybody was okay with that? Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Supervisor, you need to go to the floor, since we're going to vote on it.
Anybody from the floor?
Public can input.
I just have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Nothing involved with the bids, that's your gentleman's situation.
Most of my...
My thought is what has been always set, is the fact that, at these work sessions that you're having, you do not vote. You do not vote.
Right.
That's one thing. Another thing, as Mr. Huth said, and I understand what you're saying about the urgency of something. It seems to be that every time, not a lot of times, when this board has to do something in emergency, it turns out to be a failure, and you rush to it. Like I've said, I'm not saying nothing about bids, because that's up to you gentlemen, but it's a situation that I think that it should be looked at, and if you knew that the date was coming up, it should have been planned a long time ago, not brought to the 11th hour. And if you knew it, it should have been done two months ago. And then these other bidders that bid, they should have understood, and you gave them enough time, so that when you do make the right decision, it isn't rushed, and you have everybody's chance and quality to make a bid. And that's all I'm saying, is the common sense of this, of doing this, how you bid on this, whether the amount is great, I don't know.
Sure.
But the way it's being arrived at...
Okay, thank you.
Is a situation. That's all I'm saying. And also, voting at a work session, which you say you never do, you never vote.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I'm saying.
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on, here, let me get this. Anybody else? I guess there's nobody else? You guys are public, you... Okay, good.
I just want to answer to Mr. Cook. I don't need that.
You don't need it, Stan.
Mr. Cook, as soon as this thing showed, this item showed up on agenda, was put out for bids, so it's not that we took our time to present it and go out for bids. Immediately after the agenda item was voted on, at, at the board meeting, we went out for bids.
When was that, Mr. Cook?
I don't have that.
And then, the other question I have, Mr. Huth, is he was asking, why now? Why do we have to vote on this right now, today? Why can't we wait until the next meeting? Could you answer that question again?
Well, because the township would be in a position of...
No coverage.
Well, we couldn't let that happen. We'd re-up, you would have to have coverage, so you would have no board input on who and how we're getting covered. We can't be in a position without coverage.
Okay, good enough. And that's why we're here today. Mr. Vire?
I want to ask clerk, when, I'm sure you can't come up with these answers, but...
I'm going to try.
When, when, when was this presented to your office to be put out for quotes?
Well, as I told Mr. Cook, I don't have the dates yet.
That's what I said, you probably don't know. What I'm saying, it was delayed in this building in, in order to compress the time...
You're right, you're right.
Which is, which is a contrived situation by who was here to, to, and I want to say another thing. I have no problem with Mr. Huth asking Nickel and Saaf about questions because I don't think that he has anywhere else to go. So, but I also want to say that Mr. Saaf has been very nice about responding to my questions. He answered everything I asked, not in a timely fashion, but he answered them, after we had a couple of conversations, and I appreciate that. However, I believe this is something that was set up here to compress the timeframe, and I'm, I'm very unhappy that you can't come up with that date, but I certainly understand.
Mr. Vire, Mr. Chairman?
It was the first meeting in October.
The minute, the minute this issue came up, it was voted by the board, we went into action. We turned everything over to our attorney. Everything had to be done according to our laws and procedures, and he worked on it. The minute it was released from his office, we put it out.
Oh, this is fault?
No, it's nobody's fault. It's nobody, this is, this is serious. Mr. Vire, this is, in my opinion, this is serious. This could cost the township millions and, millions and millions of dollars, and you understand it.
Absolutely, I understand it, but I say that it was designed to do what it's doing today. That's all I'm saying.
If it was, I don't think it was designed...
I am not, I'm not talking to you.
Well, then, I'm not going to be talking to you anymore either. Thank you.
Hey, by the way, you want to talk about Shelby Manor?
Let's elevate the professionalism a little bit today.
It is very, it's very professional. If I may, one more, one more thing. I don't, I never had a meeting with these individuals. I actually, I didn't recognize them at the front office up there. However, Mr. Vire, I was involved right after the Shelby, Shelby Manor burned down. The very next day, myself and supervisor went over there to assess the situation and have a meeting. I, I didn't know what the meeting was about. I was a newcomer. I, I have no idea. I walked in a room, and next thing I know, there were all kinds of folks, including insurance companies, and they reassure us right at that point that, "Don't worry about, guys, everything's going to be okay." We're here, they were on the ground within next, the very next morning. That's, that's, I can recall this kind of situation where, where they are very responsive, and I, like I said, I personally never met these people.
So is the Auto Club.
Okay, and I just want to say, too, that was a 4.2 million dollar claim that we had at Shelby Manor, and as all of you know, you know, that is up to code, it's better than it was before, and they covered every single penny of the 4.2 million. So, they have been tested, and I'm, I'm just really happy that we did have good insurance to cover what was really, could have been a very big disaster if we didn't have the right insurance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
They also took every dollar of the premium, and that's why the taxpayer in this community paid the premium to cover the loss.
Yeah.
So, I don't need...
Okay, thank you, thank you.
To pat Mr. Saaf on the back for paying, whoever paid the premium, because that's why we paid the premium to cover the loss at the senior center.
Okay, and, and I don't want to debate this, and I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to just people who want to listen, and what I'm saying is, there are a lot of companies out there that will take your money. The question is, when there's a hardship of some kind, how many of these companies will be there? And if you don't have the right coverage or enough coverage, then you're not going to have what you need when you have a catastrophe. What we had with Shelby Manor was a catastrophe, and yes, we had people who took our premium, but in this case, we also had premium people who delivered at a time that we needed them to deliver, and there wasn't one dime that came out of our pocket, except a $10,000 deductible, which may have been waived, I'm not sure, but other than that, they covered every dime. And in addition to that, I had negotiated a special $500 per family in that building, $500 made out to each family, and I thought that was very nice, too, because these people needed help. We had the Salvation Army there, we had a lot of firemen, had a lot of people helping, and I'm just happy to say that we did even more than, than what was expected, and it was because of a great policy that we had. So, yes, they took our premium, but yes, also, they delivered the goods, and that's what we have to make sure we have. We need a $10 million umbrella, which I think is very important. I don't know if we're going to have any sexual abuse problems, but we need that coverage. I don't know if we're going to have any emergency response operation problems, but we need that coverage. And mutual aid. When our fire trucks go to Clayton Township, Utica, Washington, what if we do break some equipment of someone else's or property damage? I don't know if we need that coverage, but we need something, and it's in this policy. So, if that's all the discussion there, there is...
No, there's one other thing.
Go ahead, one other thing.
You don't know, and you can't sit here today and say that the Michigan Municipal League wouldn't have stepped up to the plate just like Beacon did. You don't know that because they didn't get the premium dollar.
I'm assuming that the Michigan Municipal League would step up every bid as good as Beacon. That's my assumption. I'm assuming that everything would have been covered. I'm assuming that they are number one, tied for first place.
I didn't come in...
However, however, they're about $20,000 more. So, if we're going to look at the lowest bid for the best value, I think it's pretty obvious. But I am not, and thank you for pointing that out, I am not saying the Michigan Municipal League would not cover all of this, although their, their cap was far lower than 10 million. I'm just saying that for the coverages being offered from Beacon One, and for the cost, this is very much the best offer.
We made...
In my opinion, this is my opinion.
We made the best offer today, and we skirted process, process, process. Process didn't mean anything today because I came in here today knowing what was going to happen. I could have stayed home and called this vote. I didn't need to come here today, but I did.
I'm glad you did. Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.